Okay, we are ready to go.
Welcome everybody to our regular meeting in Shafter City Council Tuesday, September 15th, 2020, called to order at seven o'clock. Roll call, all council members are present and can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'm over, approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Proud, second by Councilmember Given.
Councilmember Proud?
Yes.
Given?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
And Alvarado?
Yes, moving on to public comments. This person, this person wish, those persons wishing to speak on any items included on the agenda, many matter within the city, you have five minutes, but do we have anyone?
Yes, we have several emails we're gonna read off during this portion. I'll start off with the first one from Dolly Hi and the subject is closing of Shafter Library. It reads, Dear Shafter City Council Members, my name is Dolly Hi and I care very much about the future of the Shafter Library. I care about this issue because I've been a resident of Shafter since 1948, worked at the branch library for many years and recognize its value to the people of our community. The pandemic has closed the Shafter Branch Library indefinitely and I am concerned about the lack of book access and other services for our Shafter neighbors. I know that children who can read are much more likely to grow up to be good townspeople and productive members of society than those who don't. I would ask you to please direct staff to explore the possibility of a library partnership with Bakersfield College. The future of our children and community is at stake. I appreciate your time and attention to this matter. Sincerely, Dolly Hi. And the next one we have from Tony Franz and the subject is comment for city council meeting regarding Shafter Library. Shafter City Council Members, hello, my name is Tony Franz and I am reaching out to you because I care about the children of our community and I am concerned about the continued closure and future status of the Shafter Library. As the reality of distance learning and the increased online presence of our children continues, I have heard from many parents in our community regarding their concern of lack of library, of local library resources for their family. Our children's access points to predatory predatory online behavior is increasing exponentially. Our parents are concerned and crying out for safe resources and material. It is imperative that we as parents and community leaders strive to provide our children with safe, vetted books and educational resources. Please help us continue this discussion by directing staff to explore the possibility of a library partnership with Bakersfield College. Help parents in our community have access to safe learning resources for our children. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter, Tony Friend. The next one reads from Laura Wolf, subject Shafter Library reopening. Dear Mayor Alvarado and Shafter City Council Members, as the Executive Director of Kern Literacy Council, I was pleased to hear about the potential partnership to reopen the Shafter Library. I recall vividly how enthusiastic all parties were to the Shafter Learning Center's opening and the opportunity to maximize resources with the Shafter Library Branch and Shafter Learning Center. As a resident of Shafter, I have witnessed the synergy of the two operations. Each is less without the other. For a community like Shafter, having both books and computer resources is key. In the current situation with more online connectivity and computer access than ever, the library side of the equation is even more important. The sheer number of books in the home is a key indicator of school success. With students online all day, being able to take time away from the screen and read or be read to is essential. Also, since kids are home and away from friends, books can provide opportunities to travel to faraway lands or walk in other people's shoes. Visualizing the world they read about rather than seeing it all on a screen as someone else sees it stimulates the brain. As a literacy advocate, I have been impressed with the local efforts before and during the pandemic. The large network of little libraries and the city, service clubs, and local nonprofit organizations' hands-on efforts to have better book access shows their commitment. Kern Literacy Council has a new program called Booking Across Kern that we plan to bring to Shafter via the library and learning center. I hope we will have the opportunity in 2020. I urge you to direct staff to explore the possibility of a library partnership with Bakersfield College. Thank you for your consideration, Laura. The next email is from Kathy De Anda. It reads, Dear Shafter City Council Members, my name is Kathy De Anda and I care about the future of the Shafter Library. I care about this issue because books are essential for children and adults. Books are a great way to build imagination, it strengthens our literacy skills, and teaches us about the world around us. The pandemic has closed the Shafter Library Branch and I am concerned about the lack of book access for our Shafter neighbors. Due to the pandemic, we are seeing children and adults spending more time on their electronic devices and so sometimes that can overwhelm us. Having access to books can not only help us academically but emotionally. Reading allows us to relax, concentrate more, and reduces our stress. Therefore, books are a great resource to have. At this moment, I know that the children are being greatly affected because in Shafter we have many hardworking families that cannot take their children to Bakersfield or Delano to pick up books because they only have one car. These children are our investment for the future of Shafter. Therefore, I ask you to please direct staff to explore the possibility of a library partnership with Bakersfield College. This partnership would help our community in many ways. I appreciate your time and attention to this matter. Sincerely, Kathy De Anda. I'm gonna pass it off to our Deputy City Clerk Vanessa Valdivia to help me read some more of these comments.
Next public comment is from Katie and John Weeby. Dear Mayor Alvarado and Shafter City Council Members, we are Shafter residents, parents, and educators. We encourage to direct staff to explore a library partnership with Bakersfield College. We believe that a new operating model for our library is in the best interest of the children and families in Shafter for the following reasons. One, our library is currently closed due to COVID-19. The governor has recently issued an order that allows libraries to open at 25% capacity. The Kern County Library has selected 12 of their 24 libraries to reopen on October 12th. With Shafter not on the list, this means that the Shafter Library is indefinitely closed. Two, even during the best of times before COVID, our library was open only four days a week at 11:00 a.m. The Shafter Learning Center hours are different from the libraries and the high-traffic time during summer mornings. When families enrolled in SLC, classes found themselves in a bustling, staffed facility full of enthusiastic readers, ample books, and locked library doors. Three, for years, the library has been constantly at risk of losing days and hours. We should prioritize a sustainable solution for ourselves rather than leaving the future of the library to the whims of the county's budget. We are incredibly thankful for the support that you have already shown, the Save the Shafter Library effort. The ingenuity, innovation, and forward-thinking of the Shafter City Council has proven to be a boon to education efforts in our community for many years. We hope that the library can reopen with your help. Thank you, Katie and John Weeby. Our next public comment is from Melissa Bergen, City Council, City Manager, City Clerk. I stand in support of the expiration of proposed concept for long-term operational sustainability of the Shafter Library. Our Shafter Library currently serves no one. With the system in place now, not a single adult or child has access to resources the County of Kern's library system has to offer here in Shafter. Yes, COVID caused closures this year. Our community's memory goes back farther back in COVID. Many times in the past years, during the Kern County's budget yearly budget review, library hours and staffing are threatened. As a longtime Shafter community member, I am tired of Kern County holding our books and resources hostage. We need to create a long-term solution to this systematic problem. I am in full support of a new concept, a new way to manage this issue. Melissa Bergen. Our last public comment is from Teresa Verdugo. Dear Shafter City Council Members, my name is Teresa Verdugo and I care about the future of the Shafter Library. I care about this issue because I see how my children, ages 10, 5, and 2, along with many other kids in our community, have benefited from our library and also how much they've missed it during this quarantine. The pandemic has closed the Shafter Branch and Library indefinitely and I am concerned about the lack of book access for our Shafter neighbors. I know that children who can read are much more likely to grow up to be productive members of the society than those who don't. I would ask you to please direct staff to explore possibility of a library partnership with Bakersfield College. The future of our children and community is at stake. We appreciate your time and attention to this matter. Sincerely, Teresa Verdugo.
David Franz, are you on?
No, Mayor, we do have one person, Romeo, who would like to speak as well from the public.
Aye.
Romeo? Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. My name is Romeo Agbologu and I have the honor and the privilege of representing the community of Shafter as a member of the Kern Community College District Board of Trustees. I'm here today to express a couple of thoughts with relation to this item, item number one. First of all, thank you to the city manager and Dr. Franz and your city staff for their visionary leadership and their willingness to come to the table to address an issue that is both near and dear to the hearts of residents and the folks who live in the Shafter area and are surrounding communities. I have a soft spot for the community of Shafter. For many of you who know me and my history with the community of Shafter, I spent plenty of time in the Shafter Library as a former staff member to former county supervisor John McQuiston, holding mobile office hours when our regular district office was unavailable for our use because we had partnered with the Shafter Police Department to allow domestic violence counseling in our office. We know that the city of Shafter is forward-thinking, we know that the city of Shafter is innovative, and we know that they're always a willing partner. And from the Kern Community College District standpoint, we're pleased to count the city of Shafter as a partner of ours. We've spent a tremendous amount of time, energy, effort, and resources to expand our presence, Bakersfield College's presence, in the community of Shafter to service your residents and those who live in surrounding communities. And as a trustee who represents your community, I have to tell you, I was a little bit worried and very much concerned when I heard that the Shafter Library was not providing services to the community. Hence, the reason why Bakersfield College came to the table to partner with the city of Shafter to figure out a way where we can enhance services. At this point, I'd like to ask you to just pause for a minute and imagine. Imagine a library with expanded hours. Imagine a library that was operated not just by regular library staff, but perhaps student workers. Imagine a library that had a coffee shop run by culinary arts program students from Bakersfield College. Imagine a bookstore where students from Shafter and neighboring communities can purchase textbooks. Or for those who are not college students and just want to read at a leisurely level, can come in, order books, purchase books, rent books, borrow books, check out books, or just sit, visit, utilize free Wi-Fi, and just congregate in a place where they can cultivate the love of reading. That's the future that I see and I hope that you'll see that too. And so I'd ask you to direct your staff to continue to have this conversation with Bakersfield College because I really believe that not only can we keep the library open, but we'll be able to expand the services for the residents of Shafter and open that gateway to education for your young students at Shafter High, Richland, and surrounding communities. So we can build that pathway, not just to college, but develop that lifelong love of reading. So with that, thank you to your city staff. Thank you, city of Shafter, for your visionary leadership. And thank you, city council, in advance for your consideration of my kind request to direct your city staff to continue having the conversation with Bakersfield College to keep the library open.
Very well said.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yasmina?
No, no more public comment.
Okay, again, I just want to say thank you very much, Romeo, for sharing with us. And also, I just want to say to all those who took the time to write to us, thank you. Thank you very much. Now that public comment is closed, we're going to go ahead and move on to council announcements and reports. And we'll start off with the Councilmember Proud.
Okay, I have a couple meetings and I would like to have a little bit of time to just kind of give you a little more information on it. The first one I had, there were two sessions with the Valley Voice Committee that we scheduled and worked on to present our requests in Washington, DC. The first time we met, we met with a person who was a consultant with us that helped in how to set up the Zoom and work with the people in Washington, DC for our interest for Goods Movement, Highway Trust Funds, Passenger Rail for water issues, as well as for the air. And it came at a good time because of all the fires within California that need to have better forest management and got pretty good, strong support in that area from Washington, DC. I want to also say that we recognized or encouraged the people that we talked to. And there's two more meetings to go now because we met last Friday for the first session. But they know that we are in an area that is the future growth of California, the San Joaquin Valley, and it's projected that we will grow 1.7 million residents by 2060. And the trend of California has really been in that positive mode for many years already, but now they're looking at the valley. They also understand that we are in this area home of 23 of 30 of the most disadvantaged communities in California. So it gives them an opportunity to really direct more funding in our area. Now, just so that you can understand, it was, one of the requests was to do a grade separation up in Stockton with their port. And it was granted and it was announced at the meeting last Thursday that they awarded $20 million for part of that project because they hope to have that built by 2026 because they already have so much other money already designated to get that project completed. The other one that was successful was the Highway Trust Fund that was granted 16 million to finish the expansion of lanes along the Teleri, the city of Teleri. So really, that first day was pretty exciting to realize that California, as well as the San Joaquin Valley, was granted $36 million. So that was a very successful day. Now, I don't know how we can top that in the next two sessions that we have this week, but that was a good start. The other meeting was last night with AB 617. And I think you all remember that we started that committee, well, 24 meetings ago. We met almost once a month, but sometimes we've been meeting twice a month recently. It has to do with the Community Emissions Reduction Program. And what's interesting there is many of the committee members felt like they didn't really know what was happening with the air district because they just weren't updated and they didn't trust what was happening with the air district. And so now they have scheduled so many additional meetings that they really can't keep up with it. They can't keep track of all of the different elements that go along with this program. And so even yesterday, they were a little frustrated because it seemed to be moving so fast for them and more meetings scheduled. And many of them, Spanish-speaking, just are having a tough time with it. But the air district, I feel, has given them a lot of attention. And I believe that in the end, they will feel like they've really been successful because air quality was one that's affecting all of us because of the fires. And they are being warned how important it is not to be outside. You should stay inside as much as possible. You should also be changing your filters in your home. And you also need to realize how unhealthy it is affecting your lungs as well as your small particles, particulate matter that gets into the bloodstream. We will have effects coming down the road if we aren't careful. I mean, they've had way too many acres of land already, all up and down California, as well as Oregon and Washington, if you're not aware, that are affected with large fires. But in our area, we have five of the top 20 fires, which says a lot for our area. Air smoke is going as far as Hawaii and going east to the East Coast area of the state. The monitoring is continuing in all of our schools and other sites that we've identified. And there's a lot of moving vans that are moving in different areas so that they can get some good readings. Another positive thing coming out of it, we should have our three electric buses assigned to the Shafter area very soon. Once we get kids back into buses, those are going to be ready to go. Pesticides was another issue. Pesticides will have monthly updates available for these people who have concerns about more control with the use of pesticides. And so they were shown and they'll work with them so that they'll know how to use the website. The California Air Resources Board, which is above this committee where I'm an advisory representing governments, and then there are local people that are also involved, will have a meeting on September the 24th. And so they'll have a report on what we've been doing for AB 617. And then the other good one is really a big push to get solar programs started, especially for the lower-income people. And so the outreach is pretty well-planned now. And they will have mailers and flyers that will go out. They will have media and ads, Facebook, just about written media, as well as vocal media, so that they will know how to apply for different grant funding as opportunities so that they maybe will qualify to have solar put on their places. And then the annual report was another one that the air district is always required to do, and it's a 50-page report. That's when they really got excited and thought they needed to know already what's on this report. And it's only an introduction and they will have opportunity for a couple weeks here to review it and look at it. And if there's any input, then we can respond at that time. So there'll be more updates coming along. But the process is really moving and it's moving fast. And yeah, it's interesting. It really is very interesting. If you have a chance and you want to get in on it, we can certainly add you as an audience because it's pretty information. It's good information that's good for everybody. But that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much. That was a good point about air filters in the house. It's good.
Yeah, you have to be careful that you get the top-quality ones because when you get the least expensive ones, they're just not going to catch that small particle. And so you should spend a little extra and just be aware of that when you go out because you want to be as safe as you can, at least in your house.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Councilmember Given?
Kathy, the typical rule of thumb is change your air filters every three months. But I think right now, you're probably looking, yeah, just for this interim time because of everything that's been in the air. But yeah, very good point. Just wanted to say it was good hearing from all the residents on the education opportunities. I really believe that's what Shafter is about and getting to hear the voices of the people. We, as a council, really need to look and make sure that we are focusing on that library and really working to try to keep that thing open to the best of our ability. I think it's really important to have that. So I'm glad to hear the voices speaking up on that. We did not have a groundwater meeting in August. The stakeholder meeting was canceled for September. I have a funny feeling it's going to be canceled again for the main meeting at the end of September. So we haven't had a groundwater meeting for a little bit, but there hasn't been a lot to talk about besides what they've already turned in. So if anything, Mike might have additional updates on that. And I'll leave that in your court, Mike. And then I have a couple questions. What is our possibility of being able to go back live for council? Actually, having, I know we were doing it at the PD station for a little bit. And if we're running into social distance areas, what would it take to get the vets hall up and running to be able to come back live and have live council? I'll throw that one out there to you, Gabriel. If there's something we can do or at least have the conversation, I think it'd be good to have an open forum to at least allow folks to call in and/or come in and speak and just have a live moment. And then with that, is there a way that we can bring back the flag salute and the prayer to our meetings? That's always a benefit to have. Two other things. Is there a way we can get an update on the housing tracks that we have currently planned? There are a few of them that have been approved. Some of them, I know it'd be nice to have the conversation, where is it going? When are we starting? Where are we at in the development? It seems as though Shafter, which is a good thing, but Shafter is very difficult to get into. If a house goes for sale, it becomes a bidding war rather quickly, which again, is a good test of who we are. If you're looking for a rental, good luck. They're very difficult to find. And so I truly believe that not just Shafter, California in general, has a problem with housing. There's just supply and demand. There's just not enough housing, not enough affordable housing even at that. And so I would like, if there's a way that when we have our meetings, if we can get an update on where those housing tracks are at, are they moving? Is there a snag? Is there something that we need help with? I just would like to get an update on that. And then lastly, Rachel, I want to say thank you for jumping on that data for the COVID information. Very much appreciated. We sent that to a handful of the residents and a lot of thumbs up back from them. And so I'm really happy that you were able to pull that out of public health. So thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Garcia?
Just want to acknowledge Barbara Gladden. She had a nice poster out in her front yard that said, "Never forget 9/11." And I thought that was pretty awesome, you know. It's always good to remember, you know, that date there. So I do want to thank Barbara Gladden for having that poster. It was really nice. And then I'd like to thank, I don't know the officer's number, but I mean, the officer's name, police officer, someone dropped a large can of litter and trash and a bunch of garbage over there between SNJ and the new car wash. And the officer, you know, he pulled over his vehicle and he cleaned it all up. And, you know, I just want to, you know, tell him thank you. And that really wasn't, you know, his job, but he did something that, you know, that he thought was safe to do and he needed to do and get done. And he was very careful by doing it, by the way. He put his mask and his gloves on. And so I just want to thank that officer very much for that. And that's all I have right now.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Mayor Pro Temp Lopez?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for the, for the public comments. It's very important for our education for kids and their mental health especially. I'm a firm believer of that, that during these times, our kids' mental health is what's going to struggle the most and we're going to see the long-term effects later. This education and the library is key, is very key. Just like getting outside and playing sports, I truly believe that we need to get back on track. And these conversations is something we need to continue having, not just the city staff as well, with everybody else that's involved. Just like the residents came out in support of it, I support you guys as well 100% fully. I'm with you guys on that. And something needs to get done. And I think we need to continue these conversations very quickly and see what we can achieve together. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Temp Lopez. I just want to share, well, I just want to say thank you to Romeo for his time, for sharing with us, to see me and also all the parents that the extra time they took out from their busy schedule to just reach out to us. Over the last week here, I lost a very close friend of mine from COVID and just really hit home. And knowing just that experience, you know, it's out there. It really is out there. And I just say, you know, just continue doing your best to protect yourself. And just, wow, I just didn't know that would hit that close to home. But it is out there. And just again, I just want to say protect yourself and the community. Just do the same thing, protect yourself. And it's passed the word on. So that's pretty much all I have to share right now. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on to consent calendar. Have everyone take a quick look at it. If there's any questions? If not, can I get a motion for approval of the consent? If not, uh, can I get a motion for approval of the consent calendar, please?
Motion to approve.
Now, motion by Councilmember Gibbons and second by, um, Councilmember Garcia.
Councilmember Proud?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
And Alvarado?
Yes. Uh, moving on to mana- a management report. Number one on the, on the list is the exploration, uh, proposed concept for long-term operational sustainability for Shafter Library.
Early mayor and council, um, this item before you is for discussion and direction. David and I will tag team this, our education director. So as you know, uh, last meeting, we gave you a brief update under the city manager's report that we had been approached by Bakersfield College about the possibility of pursuing this proposed concept of a new partnership with Bakersfield College for the operation of the facility. As you know, the facility itself is owned by the, um, city. So this is more of the operation, uh, similar to what we have with the county. A- as you've heard from public comment, as we know, most, most recently due to the county's budget situation, our library was in threat of being shut down. Along with several other county libraries in the county. So what we're looking for is a long-term sustainable operational partner. Uh, it's evident that the library is not only critical to the city's education program, but also to the community as a whole. And it's obvious and evident the results that have proven as a result of this partnership and how critical having the library is to the education of our youth and the results of that. So I'm going to have, um, David provide the, a little bit more detail on the analysis, and then I'll circle back with, uh, some of the alternatives and what we are proposing, uh, to move forward. I just do want to say that anything we move forward with is at this time not binding. This is explor- exploratory. Uh, and there might be other options too for us to explore as well, in addition to the potential partnership with Bakersfield College. So with that, David?
Sure. Honorable mayor, members of the Shafter City Council, um, the the library, as you know, is, is a really important part of our community, and it's an important part of the work of the Shafter Learning Center. It's also something that the statistics shows is very heavily used. Our, our branch is the smallest of the twenty-four branches in Kern County. By square footage, but it was thirteenth in circulation and in two thousand nineteen, seventh in program participation and third in the total number of visitors. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic. And one of the, one of the challenges, even with all of that traffic, has been the, um, the limited hours even prior to, to COVID. In addition, uh, the, the GAF expansion of the facility includes an expansion of the library. So this sort of raises the stakes of, um, finding a solution that would maintain the, the operations of the facility so that we don't open a new, a new building, um, that, that is not in service. So the, the the analysis here is, um, really a question of what is the, what is a solution that's going to provide for the long-term sustainability of this operation and the, the library? We recognize that budgets are tight everywhere. Um, Kern County is not immune from that, and we're simply trying to find a, a solution that will allow our library to continue serving the public. Bakersfield College is a partner that we've worked with in the past, and they've come forward and asked to be a part of some kind of solution. And, um, as you heard from Trustee Agblog, they have a vision for how that would work and how it would be connected to their, their work in education in Kern County and in Shafter. And, um, I think that it would be, it's, it has a lot of potential as a, as a mutually beneficial partnership. There is, of course, a risk that um, if we were to, if, if things were to change and Kern County was able to continue to, or to reopen libraries and Shafter was not really a part of that network anymore. Um, we wouldn't receive that benefit. It's also important to note that the taxes that are, are paid from Shafter would very likely continue to be paid, the portions that are funding the library regardless of whether the library is being operated by the county. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it back to City Manager Gonzalez.
Certainly. Thank you, David. So, so mayor and council, um, I, I, as David said, and I want to echo what he just said. We're not saying that the county has not been a good partner, but, uh, just to reiterate, we're all faced with budgetary constraints, um, in light of COVID. But also even prior to COVID, I think it's well known that, you know, we're all struggling with, uh, the financial economics of the growing demand for service levels and the expectation of our constituents. So, um, the county's been a good partner, but, but I think we realize that the, the challenges they're faced, no different than the challenges we have with loss of revenue, even our own budget. As we projected in current fiscal year twenty twenty-one of approximately four point four. And with the economy being still partially shut down, foreseeably that four point four is going to increase. So with that, just want to bring this back in terms of the proposed concept is it's on the very early stage. Uh, as I, David and I have said, Bakersfield College approached us. We've had a, a couple of meetings with Supervisor Couch. It's, uh, my understanding that the county administrative officer, office is, is also been engaged. Both Supervisor Couch and the C O's office, my understanding is, uh, willing to pursue this and have further discussions. And so, um, with that, what we want to say is that, again, one of the things that Bakersfield College is asking for is a letter of intent. All that is, is, as you, we have done letters of intent for other, uh, transactions, it's just outlining different particulars of, of, of what we're going to engage in, in terms of discussions. It's not binding the city. It's not binding either party into it. All it means is we're going to explore, we're all at the table, we're in consensus that we want to move forward, and we're supportive of this idea. Which allows us to do our due diligence. There's a lot of questions we still need to talk through with Bakersfield College. There's questions we need to talk with the county about operation assets, uh, the, the books, the computer system. Are we going to have access to the countywide library system databases still? Are we going to be able to still get some of the services from the countywide library system? And so those are all questions that we need to, to work out. And this would allow us to move forward in that direction and engage in those discussions to provide answers to you. So you can make an informed decision if and when we decide to move forward in an actual agreement type of transaction with Bakersfield College. So, so we staff are in the opinion that there, there's really no harm in us engaging in these discussions. I think it's pertinent that we do uh, for the benefit of the community, the youth, and it's consistent with you, your vision as a city council of your strategic goal to focus on education for the youth. Uh, you've made a significant investment in the acquisition of the, of the facility, the building itself. You, you make an annual financial contribution and commitment to education and the, the tune of about eight hundred thousand per year. And that's all because of your strategic vision for the community as it relates to education. So what we are trying to secure here is a long-term sustainable operation library. And so with that, we explored three different options that you, we like to present. One, you can direct us to move forward with the letter of intent, working with Kern County and Bakersfield College, so that we can conduct our due diligence, look into the concept of Bakersfield College operating the, the Shafter Library. As stated, staff recommends this option. As I said, there's no, there's no, nothing binding with the letter of intent. It's just a commitment to work together. And it allows us to do our due diligence. We could also seek another partner, other than Bakersfield College, to operate the library. Um, that might be a little bit more difficult to do. That may even involve maybe exploring, what does it look like if the city of Shafter took over the library itself, the operation of it? We already own the building that we were to operate ourselves. What's the budget? What's not only the short term, but the long-term financial capital investment we need to make? As you can imagine, books, we need to keep recent. So there's an annual investment we will need to make out of our operating budget into operating the library. In this particular, at this particular time, we're not recommending this option. We could, however, still do both. We can explore the letter of intent with Bakersfield College and, and as an alternative, look at what does it cost to the city and bring that information back to you as part of our due diligence. Right? Again, you're not committing to either one, but you're getting information. And then the third of which we're not recommending is to not do anything and let the status quo remain. Meaning we don't pursue the letter of intent and the due diligence phase with Bakersfield College and the county. And we basically remain the way we are and hope that the county's budget will allow to continue to operate the library on a long-term sustainable manner, which in this case, we're not recommending. So to su- summarize, obviously, the option one is direct staff to do the letter of intent and to work with Kern County Bakersfield College to conduct due diligence. Alternatively, you can not go in that direction and have us do the exploration of some, another operator, but we're not recommending that. But alternatively, what you could do is say, hey, do explore what it would cause the city to operate itself and bring back those two scenarios if that was an option. But definitely, option one, alternative one is a recommendation to direct us to go ahead and enter into a letter of intent with Kern County Bakersfield College. And council, that concludes our staff report. Oh, and just lastly, at this time, there is no fiscal impact. Other than staff time for David and myself, maybe our finance director and, and finance staff to look at our budget and crunch some numbers. Um, but outside of that, there is no fiscal impact. No party's asking us to invest, uh, or contribute towards consultants or, or anything like that. It's simply uh, staff time that's involved in this, in this process right now. And mayor, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and open up for council. If any comments from council?
Yeah, I, I, I have a couple. Gabriel, we had talked about, what is the delta difference? What are we paying for right now with the city? I I guess I'm under the impression that the city is paying for a small amount of hours with the library itself. And, and I know we own the building, we manage everything else outside of the library, but I thought we had additional costs that we were paying for the library itself. Correct. Would you make a contribution? And David, do you have those particulars? Can you share those with us?
Sure. Sure. That's, we make a contribution of five thousand dollars per year, and that's to pay for an additional day of service per week.
One day per week. Okay. So we're talking a delta, well, yeah, Saturday. So we're talking a delta, we're looking for someone to cover five days a week while we maintain the Monday? Or are we looking for someone to do six days a week? Ideally, we're, uh, Councilmember Gibbons, mayor and council. I think ultimately what we're going to want is equal or enhanced service for Bakersfield College for them to operate the library. So while we're not entering I'm sorry? Equal of Kern County or equal? Current to what we have right now. Okay, okay. Current or, or, or in hand. So, so those particulars, I think if we can come back to, to you and we conclude the exploratory phase, uh, and due diligence process, and we say, yeah, you know, it makes sense for us to partner with Bakersfield College and the county signs off on that and says, yes, let's move forward with that transaction. I think then the next step is for us to actually enter into contract or agreement negotiations with Bakersfield College in terms of what that partnership is going to look like. Obviously, we're going to want, you know, the six days of service. We're going to want to limit our contribution, or do we? What is that, what does that partnership look like? But our recommendation going into discussions with Bakersfield College is equal or enhanced from what we currently have. Okay, whi- which I, I like where you're going with it. Um, my other question to that is, what does the timing look like? Going into a, a LOI with Bakersfield College is fine. Do we have deadlines that we're trying to adhere to? And i- if we go longer than anticipated, does that just put us back in the position that the county potentially is going to open up and now there's not a need for the partnership? I like the idea of the partnership with Bakersfield College, by the way, because it gives us a partnership with the higher education and it's something that we should have here in Shafter, period. So I like the idea of being able to include that, but I don't want this thing dragging out for months at a time. So do we have a, a deadline date that we're working on? So, so, no, the, the, the short answer is we have not set a deadline. So, so we have not, we, being David and myself, have not entered and engaged Bakersfield College or the county into too much detail of this concept because we didn't want to go too far out without council consensus that you were in concurrence for us to engage in this, in these talks. If tonight you say, yes, let's move forward with this, let's do the LOI. One of the things we will plan now is a kickoff meeting with Bakersfield College and the county to do just that. Typically, in, in, in a transaction like this, we'll put a schedule together. We all identify roles and responsibilities of what that research is going to look like and the due diligence. Ideally, for me to be able to come back to you would be within ninety days or less. So that come mid-year budget review, you have some information and we know that we start, and we are going to do some other form of partnership. We could take that into account as we begin our fiscal year, our new fiscal year budget, twenty-one, twenty-two, and have that information in time for that. So within ninety days, tops a hundred and twenty days, I think we're all committed. I think Bakersfield College has the resources to be able to, um, dedicate. David, myself are, are willing to put the time into it, and we believe the county also is uh, willing to put the time into it. So again, for us, we would want to coincide a minimum uh, to come back to you by mid-year budget review, so that we can start talking about how, how or what the impact is going to be our general fund budget or not. Because if Bakersfield College takes it over and it's enhanced service, we may actually realize a bit of a cost savings in our budget. But that's my timeline. Again, we would have that conversation during the first kickoff meeting with Bakersfield College and the county to set up at that schedule. I would, I would anticipate then that has you, as we go through this letter of intent, or the, you know, the LOI, as we move to this and progress of this, and we come back for the next council meeting, we have an idea on schedule, but is there something we can do in the interim from the city's perspective, just to at least have, you know, one or two days open to allow students access into it? Is that possible? Kind of like an interim before the ninety or a hundred and twenty days is up? Something to think? Yeah, yeah. I, I, I think that's a comment, uh, and a question that David and I can follow up with the county. The county still is the operator of the library. So there may be something we can take up with the, the librarian and the county administrative office to see if there's something they can do on an interim, what that could look like. So we definitely can pursue that separate and apart from these discussions with Bakersfield College, as you said, on the interim. Thank you. That's all I have.
I think for that, for anyone else?
Yeah, yeah, this is Manuel. Yeah, I would, uh, you know, I'd like to, um, just throw this out there, seeing if it's, if this is something doable, but I always thought we owned it, the library one hundred percent, and, um, I was just, uh, thinking and hoping maybe if we don't own it one hundred percent, how can, you know, our attorney and Gabriel and you guys get together with the county, get an appraisal out there and see what it is the county owns, and then we can buy it outright. And we can own it one hundred percent. And then that would be, to me, I see a great investment, and we never again have to worry about the county and, 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 you know, bringing up the county. It, it belongs to Shafter one hundred percent, therefore we can decide and do what we want, you know, always like, like what the people said earlier, for, for our, for our students in Shafter and our parents, everybody that uses that facility. And obviously, then make the deals or, or, I mean, make the comments or the, with Bakersfield College and even with, even inviting Cal State Bakersfield and La Verne, Point Loma, all these places. I mean, but I think the important thing is right here is to try to own the building one hundred percent. Only Shafter owns it. Um, I don't know if that's something that, you know, the county will sell us. I don't know. But I think that's important for us to buy it outright.
Daniel, we own the building, and you were part of the council when we took over that building a few years ago.
Sounds good, but, uh, how come we always bring the county in, in, in it? What do they own? Five bucks, twenty-five bucks? If they own twenty-five bucks, then get an appraisal and give them the money for the twenty-five bucks or whatever they own. So in other words, I don't, I would like to see us not mention the county ever, that we own it outright. Do we or do we not?
Councilmember Garcia, mayor and council, my, as, as already stated, the, the, the building itself is owned by the city, the assets the the building itself is owned by the city, the assets within the library, the books, the 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 software and the operation is by the county. So so what you would be describing is to do a full acquisition from the county for the assets, the books, the furnishings, uh, the the software application, whenever it is they may use, for the city to buy that a hundred percent. We basically would then be taking a hundred percent ownership of the library. And that's, as I mentioned in the alternatives, that could be an alternative as a plan B, if you will, that we can explore of what does it look like for the city of Shafter to become the operator of the library? In other words, it's it's a city library versus with the county operator. So we own the facility, we own the assets. And then what we're what we're talking about is negotiating in some form with the county that our library doesn't become a standalone Shafter owning, but that we're able to access the resources in the countywide library system to provide greater accessibility to our residents and our youth of some of the other books, like now my understanding is you can request the book at our library that will get shipped from one of maybe the lot main library in downtown Bakersfield. They ship it from there to Shafter and now whoever requested it, one of our resident, has access to that. We want to make sure that we keep those pipelines available and accessibility to our residents. So those are the type of questions that we even need to explore, but I understand the concept you're describing of us becoming the full-time operator and purchase the books, the furnishings and the software application.
Thank you, Gabriel. Yeah, thank you. That that's what I would like us to try to eventually do. You know, I just get tired of, I mean, I like the county, the county's great, I think, I mean, you know. Uh, but at the end of the day, you know, I kind of want to, I care more about the people that live in Shafter and and you know, like, like Chad said, you know, we do own, you know, the library, but it seems like the counties always kind of might be in the way, so is there a way we can own it one hundred percent? This this way, we just deal with everything, but thank you, I really appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Anyone else?
Okay. Honorable Mayor, this is David Franz. I I just wanted to point out, I neglected to mention before that Bakersfield College Dean Bill Mosley is on the line and is available for for questions if if you have any to direct to BC.
All right, thank you very much for that. Um, sir, Mr. Mosley, would you like to say something on this part, on this portion?
Um, we are happy to partner with the city of Shafter and we believe that that having access to books and educational materials and and those electronic opportunities uh, to engage with learning is is vitally important to to our, all of our rural partner communities. And we would look forward to uh to engaging with with all of these discussions. We're absolutely in support of of whatever we can do to create educational opportunities in Shafter.
All right, thank you very much for that, Mr. Mosley.
Gilbert, I think Kathy wanted to say something.
Okay. No, I think I'm going along with the supporting the staff and moving forward for the uh letter of intent and concept and let's see what we got. We'll get some information and have some more discussion as we go along. Looks good.
Sounds good.
Um, before we get finished on this subject, I do, I just want to make a comment as well is that after hearing to us the Romeo sharing his his vision for what he sees uh, library could look like from BC partners with us. I'm sold. I like when he said coffee and books. Um, I mean, so that sounds like a good idea. I'm from all the options that we have here, from the three options, I think option one is is a good one. So I'll also support the option number one, so I'll second the number one, option number one. So we have a motion by uh Councilmember. Motion by Councilmember Proust and second by Mayor Alvarado.
Sorry about that. Uh, Councilmember Proust? Yes, ma'am. Given?
Got it.
Lopez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes, ma'am.
And Alvarado?
Yes, moving on to number two.
Really quick, Mayor?
Yes.
Just goes out on this item. The actual letter of intent we'll bring back to you for your approval at the October sixth meeting on a consent calendar. Meanwhile, though, since time is of the essence and hopefully you would, you as a council would be in concurrence. David and I can move forward and scheduling with Bakersfield College kickoff meeting to put a schedule together so we can begin the due diligence, if that's okay. I don't want to wait till the October sixth to move forward with it. I like to concurrently get that meeting on on our calendar and then bring the LOI to you on October sixth. Is that okay with you, counsel?
I think yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to number two, GIS system upgrade authorization.
So, Mayor Council, so this is, as you know, we have a robust GIS system. And any robust system needs continual upgrading and and updates. And so our public works director has prepared an item so that we can do another upgrade to our GIS system. So without Mike?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor, members of the Shap City Council, the city's geographic information system is a tool used by city staff for data storage and access as well as customized mapping applications. GIS services are available to staff via desktop computers as well as online and mobile platforms. And we now employ two GIS GIS staff members full-time to ensure our GIS systems are meeting the needs of multiple city departments. So in order to do this, periodic system upgrades are necessary. And we have some pressing upgrades that are needed now primarily for security reasons, but also to enhance the uses and benefits of GIS. So tonight's staff is proposing software purchases and professional services provided by Esri, which is the city's contracted GIS provider. Um, a recommended budget for these upgrades is thirty thousand, which can be absorbed by multiple city operating budgets. With us tonight is the city GIS coordinator Chris Schultz to walk the council and the public through the upgrades um, that will protect our data and enable the public to actually take advantage of GIS services and participate in community-based planning via online and mobile platforms. So um, I'd like to Mr. Introduce, I'd like to introduce Mr. Schultz to the council and he is going to walk us through a PowerPoint presentation. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mike, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. As Mike stated, over the past three years, the city has invested in a robust online mapping system called ArcGIS Online. Uh, nearly all city departments currently utilize its services, either through advanced data collection in the field or simply through customized dashboards that each department has. Uh, the reason the reason I decided to focus on the online mapping platform when I first began here three years ago was primarily due to the deficiencies in our current GIS server. Um, our GIS server nowadays is referred to as an enterprise system. Um, is what regulates the type of version that we can use for desktop software as well as provides a secure portal for managing, editing and accessing our GIS data behind our firewall. Uh, because of the age of our GIS server, essentially, our online and GIS server systems today cannot communicate with one another, um, leading to some missed opportunities to build upon this platform going forward in the future. The goal in the coming weeks is to upgrade our current outdated GIS server system to a more modern, secure ArcGIS enterprise platform, uh, which will modernize the city's GIS system and allow us to fully leverage the small government enterprise agreement that we pay for on a yearly basis with Esri. Uh, this upgrade will also create a GIS environment that is connected, meaning that our online platform could communicate directly with our server and desktop services. Um, Yasmina, next slide, please. Thank you. Um, on this slide, this lists the top eight reasons for upgrading. Um, there are many reasons to upgrade to ArcGIS Enterprise. Um, these are some of the larger advancements that are possible. But it's worth mentioning that this upgrade also contains many smaller capabilities that will be enhanced using this technology. Um, but since time is short, I'm just going to focus on the first and last bullet item on this list. Um, regarding bullet number one, security upgrade. Our current GIS server is running a two thousand and eight version of Microsoft SQL uh, that was installed in two thousand and ten, uh, as well as running the Windows seven operating system. Um, and we know how far behind that has been for security updates. Uh, for context, our GIS server requires a SQL database, um, software system to function. So in addition to our server's data management system and our operating system, um, we also have the ArcGIS server software to be installed on top of that. Um, and these capabilities work in concert with each other, sort of the three-headed snake. And these capabilities we can use within our GIS server directly related to our version of SQL. And therefore, in order to upgrade our system, we will initially need to purchase new licenses for Microsoft SQL Server, um, which is contained in today's gen agenda, the quote is in there. Um, this is a one-time purchase and we'll keep our GIS server up to date for a minimum of five years. Uh, additionally, this system upgrade also allows for an upgrade to Windows. And we can run the most current version of Windows for server and and that will not cost us anything with our current agreement with Microsoft. Uh, so once the database software and the operating system is updated, updated, let's talk more about the ArcGIS Enterprise system. So that can be configured within this new system. And this process is very intricate and in order to guarantee a smooth installation, we will need to consult with Esri solution engineers to complete the process. Um, and they provide something called the jumpstart package that includes a full installation of the new ArcGIS Enterprise system and all the security components that tie back into that SQL server and to our Windows operating system that will keep the the total system secure from the launch date. Um, now talking about the last bullet point. Um, one of the things as a as a GIS coordinator, one of the things that we lack in the city of Shafter is a public-facing hub or a public safe-facing website that can provide the city with uh data, tools, the people um, and and the initiatives and programs that we'd like to see happen in the city of Shafter. Um, on the next slides, uh, we will go through a few of the screenshots from other organizations' hub websites um, that provide a pretty good example of what we can do here in Shafter for our staff and for our residents. Um, the hub is exciting, it's a website that's completely customizable by the GIS division and is included in the cost of our small and government enterprise agreement. Uh, so we have the ability to offer new services to our citizens that will link directly to that GIS system that we're upgrading and communicate effectively with all of our city departments that they support. Um, so Yasmina, let's go through the the hub slides, next slide, please. Um, this slide is actually just the landing page for the city of Fresno's data hub. Um, and the reason I I wanted it to be shown to you all is because it's a very simple layout that Fresno uses. They don't offer a ton of information on their GIS hu- hub, but that is a very um, modern, fresh look um, to be able to access data and to contact the department. And so this is something that we can do above and beyond the standard systematic approach that's used to online, to our, that our current online website has. And next slide, Yasmina. Now, Douglas County, Colorado offers an example of customized applications that city government top of city government topics that are covered. Uh, so for instance, we can create applications that are specific to public safety, transportation, economics, um, health and human services, our recreation and our parks department um, that the public can engage with right from this hub, um, on top of accessing data and other things. Uh, Yasmina, next slide, please. In Tempe, Arizona, they offer a full and robust data catalog to their citizens and to anyone who accesses the data. And that's actually one of the number one questions I get from other organizations to the city of Shafter. And that is, how can I download your city limits? How can I download your boundary data? How can I download your zoning and land use and general plan information that is publicly available by ordinance and law? And this would be the place to do it. It'd be one-stop shopping for anyone who wants to gain access to our information. Um, of course, all of these data layers are vetted by our staff uh, in order to remove uh any personal information for our citizens that wouldn't be accessible publicly. So, um, so this is a huge benefit and I thought the city of Tempe does a really good job of creating categories for for data downloads that people can sort of capture their attention and to where they can more easily access data. Uh, next slide, Yasmina. In Toronto, um, one of the things that we also don't provide publicly through our GIS system that we could, using our small government enterprise agreement, we could really leverage the fact that we pay for this yearly, is the idea of of uh being able to make publicly available um our our actual police data, uh, our crime data. And uh, the city of Toronto does a really great job of offering not only data layers, but also tables of data that might be easier to access than going to um a a different system. So that's something that we can do and and you can do it in a way that is configured by the organization and not by a third-party application. Next slide, Yasmina. Uh, in Stark County, Ohio, they have a really good example of something that I think would be most practical to the Public Works Department. And that is creating customized applications for different initiatives and programs that are going on in each department. In this particular case, Stark County Engineering Department produces four customized applications for their citizens to look over current road closures, obstructions that have been, uh, that have been pointed out in real time using a survey by citizens. Uh, find out which sidewalks are ADA compliant and also check out um future and and past engineering projects such as maybe a road project. Uh, so this would be a really huge benefit to our citizens, that's something that's sort of been in con, uh, been in talks with engineering as we speak. So this is a huge, would be a huge upgrade for our online system. And then finally, Yasmina, last slide, thank you. Oh, no, we have one more. Uh, in Salt Lake City, uh, Salt Lake City is very interesting. They really enjoy doing surveys to their citizens and then posting all of the, all the infographics um, of those surveys, basically the results of those surveys in both tabular and spatial forms. You can see uh, the, on the bottom right, you can see where all the survey respondents were. Um, whereas in the infographic, you can see the results of each individual question based on those four hundred and ninety-seven respondents um, for this particular issue. Um, this is something that is can be completely embedded into our ArcGIS hub and again, provides a lot of transparency to our, for our users and our residents to be able to see, uh, you know, sort of the pulse of what's happening within the city. And now the last one, uh, in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Uh, they use something that I think is really a benefit to to Shafter and that is they embed the current dashboards into their ArcGIS hub website. They provide uh policy and procedural information. In this particular case, I decided to take a screenshot of their addressing procedures site where the, if a, if a citizen wants to change their address or if a developer wants to come in and request addresses, it not only provides the ability to do so by ordinance or by policy, uh, but also gives them a link in the, in the actual uh ArcGIS hub site to request that online. Um, and that information would go directly to the GIS coordinator. Additionally, they they embedded a web application in their site that actually has the full address point file of the city so that so that residents can engage with the current addresses, see what, see what the city has on file um, and then make their decision as to whether or not they want to make an an address request. So the hub is very interactive, it provides um a multitude of different options that we can, that we can provide for our citizens. It is designed as a citizen engagement site and comes with the ArcGIS Enterprise update. So amongst those eight, you know, advancements that are very, very critical, these are the two things, security and our uh citizen engagement site really are the two things that I wanted to focus on in my short time. Um, but to conclude, upgrading our GIS server to a modern, secure ArcGIS enterprise system is going to have an immediate impact just in the security, but also long-term benefits for the staff and for our public engagement. Um, the goal is to properly install this new system with the help of our partner Esri and to work to develop a system that integrates our online platform with our enterprise system. Um, and that's, and that's what I have. I'll give it back to Mike if he has any comments.
Uh, thank you, Chris. Um, as stated in your staff report, uh, staff is requesting up to thirty thousand dollars in expenditures for the necessary server security upgrades as well as the jumpstart package provided by Esri, which will, uh, which in involves their team installing the necessary software to upgrade to ArcGIS uh, enterprise. Now, um, there is eighteen thousand of the thirty thousand total um, is to cover the professional services provided by Esri. And we could have, um, we could have, we could save that cost by having the uh GIS and IT staff take the lead on the installation side of this. But given the current workload, particularly with our IT staff, we don't think that we can commit the make the commitment that these upgrades need. Um, so we do the eighteen thousand installation option is money well spent, so we could take advantage of some of these upgrades that Mr. Schultz pro- profiled as soon as possible. So with that, um, Mr. Schultz and I can answer. that Mr. Schultz profiled as soon as possible. So with that, Mr. Schultz and I can answer any questions that the council or the public might have.
Thank you, Mike. Any any questions from council?
Very cool.
I'd like to go ahead and make motion for the GIS system upgrades.
Just really quick, Mayor. Slight correction in the agenda title. The staff report is asking authorization to the for the public works director. So I want to make this correction on the on the agenda. It says GIS coordinator. It should be the public works director being authorized to award. So just a slight change from GIS coordinator to public works director.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Garcia. Do we have? We have a second by Mayor Pro Temp Lopez.
Councilmember Proud?
Yes.
Givens?
Yeah.
Lopez?
Yes.
Garcia? Councilmember Garcia?
Oh, yes.
And Mayor Alvarado?
Yes, also with the corrections that were noted.
Thank you.
Moving on to number three proposition. For grant writing service contract award.
Certainly, Mayor and Council, our public works director will make the the staff report. Like I said, this is pretty exciting what we'll be talking about here as I know that park development is a priority for our city council. And so this is consistent with your strategic goal to continue to improve the quality of life for our residents and to further develop our park system. So with that, Mike?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the Shaver City Council, a new round of Proposition 68 park grant funding has been made available by the state. The statewide park program or SPP round four promises 400 million for park grants to be awarded through a competitive application process. Last year, the submitted the city submitted round three applications for four city park projects and unfortunately it came out empty-handed. One issue with the last round is that we previously focused on existing parks rather than developing a new park. And based on the past grant awards, the state is clearly prioritizing new park sites, particularly in underserved areas. This is one of the reasons, one of the main reasons why the Shafter Recreation and Park Districts, the project off the East East Dash Avenue received more than $8 million in round three funding. To ensure the future city applications are as competitive as possible and that they don't overlap or compete with the district applications, staff has developed a new strategy for round four. The first part of that strategy is focusing on a new new park site, the most obvious of which would be in the North Shafter area, specifically at the city-owned parcel near the southwest corner of Fresno Avenue and Highway 43. Second, the second part of the strategy is to utilize the services of Gil Garcia, the consultant that completed the successful applications on behalf of the district. So Mr. Mr. Garcia's proposal is the focus of this particular agenda item. He's proposing if not to exceed fee a 15,000. So we had paid a previous consultant last year, $12,000 per application, but given Mr. Garcia's success rate, his proposal should make the city more competitive at this time. And I think it's important to point out, these particular applications are weighed very heavily on citizen engagement on a park design. So to assist the city and Mr. Garcia with capturing public input, staff plan to partner with the Public Health Advocates, which is a nonprofit organization that has specific and proven skill sets in this area. What's even better is that their staff and resources will be will be provided free of charge. Council and the council and the public, particularly the residents living near the proposed park site can expect to receive notifications about community outreach events and virtual meetings as early as this month. The round four funding applications are due in December. So as previously stated, the intent tonight is to be able to put Mr. Garcia to work on the city's grant application. The the fee will not exceed 15,000 and should be covered by the parks operating budget without budget action required into the council tonight. So the agreement, as requested, will be signed by the city manager, but subject to review and approval by the city attorney. And with that, that concludes the presentation. I can answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Mr. James. Any questions from council?
I have one. Did any of the public comments that we had before apply to this one too? Can it be used?
Yes, we have. We do have to conduct at least five new, five new events. They could be virtual, they could be in person. And we will try to leverage what we've already the input we've already gathered. But it's important to point out that the state is prioritizing having those meetings within a really short distance of the project site. So you're you you have the ability for members of the community to access the meeting whether they're walking, riding their bike, or you know, driving themselves over there. So we'll try to salvage those past outreach meetings, but more than likely we'll have to conduct five new of public forums to gather public input.
Is that because it's brand new land and new brand new area?
Mostly because the past events, although we did gather useful information, logistically, the state had issues with the lack of documented access for everyone to participate in those meetings. And so we, I think, believe we had wanted Veterans Park, even though that was live streamed via Facebook. The state did share their concerns that we didn't document or provide access from remote areas of Shafter to participate at that particular location. So more than with the help of public health advocates, we're we will conduct again at least five new, whether virtual or in-person forums.
Yeah, because those responses, that that was a good meeting we had at Veterans Park.
Yeah, I think I think. And they were focused on existing parks, but we could still salvage the wish lists that were gathered at those events and apply them to the new site that we're focusing on now.
Okay, where where do the public health advocates come from? What are they?
Certainly, Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Proud, Mayor and Council, I can respond to that. Their outfit that was recommended to me because of the fact that they do a lot of pro bono work in one of the areas they specialize in is not in grant writing, but it's basically they're funded through the California Endowment and other public health entities like that that are nonprofit. And they fund this organization to take and take on projects, initiatives, take and provide technical assistance to jurisdictions that are seeking to improve recreational activities that benefit their local population. And in one of the areas that typically focuses disadvantaged communities. And so they were referred to me by a colleague of mine. And one of the key areas they specialize is is the community outreach area. They have a very well-written document that they've been able to use as a best practice, which we found is critical. The community outreach is critical to make a successful grant application. And so between Mike and Rachel, who's becoming our community engagement expertise, will will be leading the the work with public health advocates. But they're pro bono, very successful track record, and they're privately funded through other organizations that this is all they do throughout the state.
Sounds good.
Hey, Gilbert, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gilbert.
You're on, Mr. Gilbert.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Temp Lopez. And who was the second from?
Givens.
And Councilmember Givens.
Councilmember Proud?
Yes.
Givens?
Yep.
Lopez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
And Alvarado?
Yes, thank you. And now we're moving on to city managers' comments and reports, departments' comments and reports.
Certainly, Mayor and Council, just a few updates. Obviously, COVID-19 update. We're getting, we're providing that data to you on a weekly basis. Rachel is again taking lead on providing that to you. And so those numbers do continue to increase. According to Kern Kern County, one of the things we're trying to do is work towards getting ourselves out of that bottom tier which we are in and go to the next tier so that we can reopen more of our businesses. And that's the goal. But again, stay safe and segue to the facial mask campaign that Rachel, working with our external partners, right, has undertaken. This is a follow-up item from the Education Partnership Ad Hoc Committee, meeting that we had with the high school that we had with Grimway, Richland School District, Shafter Recreation District and the city to to put together an education campaign for our residents and the importance of wearing a mask. So they've had their first kickoff meeting, and in the coming weeks, the committee will be working on a joint letter announcing the campaign, the flyers, social media graphics, and the video that we're going to send out to the entire committee. Rather than the city trying to take on a campaign, all these different entities that I mentioned are playing a different role. Like I believe Grimway's graphic arts artist that's on staff is taking lead on putting together the social media graphics and others are providing other 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 contributions to the campaign. So you'll be seeing more of that here in the coming weeks. Just a reminder, for October 6th, our city council meeting time start time changes to six o'clock. I think we're all very saddened that we're going from seven to 6:00 PM. I say that jokingly, but again, I think this would be a new change. We have sent out information in the utility bills. I believe staff has put together some notices to go out. We're going to be putting more information out in the social media venues that we use. So just if you can help us continue to let people know that I may be interested just six o'clock start time effective October 6th. We are still soliciting letters of interest for planning commissioners. So again, we're continuing to disseminate information. But if you know of anybody that's interested, please send them over to our city clerk, Yasmina, who is taking lead on that.
What is the deadline?
The deadline is September 22nd, Tuesday at 5:00 PM.
September, okay.
Yes. So Tuesday, September 22nd, by 5:00 PM, they have to have their letters of interest.
Thank you.
Yeah, and they can mail those directly to our city clerk at city clerk@shafter.com. To Councilmember Givens, questions by going back to a live city council meeting. I think we have shared with council that we had applied through the county cares money, the CDBG cares grant for equipment. We were hoping to use some of the 93,000 to purchase equipment, video equipment, sound equipment to be able to televise our meetings at the Veterans Hall. We subsequently came back to you and said that the county Planning Department had basically, without so many words, said that that project was not consistent with the CDBG cares money. So what we did then, and we amended our cares grant application, and we are now going to use the cares county money. So that's the other part of my, that's the 700,000 that we received originally. So we're going to be able to use those monies to purchase the equipment for the Veterans Hall. And just in the last couple of days, our acting IT manager, Johnny Rubio, received a quote from the vendor. And so we'll be able to move forward with that. So just bear with us a little bit of patience, but our goal consists in what you have asked is to go back to in-life persons. You know, some facilities at up to 25% capacity of the building to be able to comply with social distancing. Our dilemma was not having the proper equipment to be able to televise and the sound equipment to be able to record properly and be able to capture everyone's voice. But we have a green light. We're moving forward. We're going to use the care county cares money, the 700,000 for this purchase. So stand by probably once we do installation and we're able to schedule with our contractor to get the work done. But I'm hoping maybe within the next 30 to 60 days, we might be able to go back to to live meetings. With regards to the flag salute and prayer, I'll talk with Yasmina. See if somehow we can put a slide up, put the flag. We can do that via Zoom. We'll just stand up, do the pledge of allegiance and have a prayer at the beginning of the meeting. That shouldn't be an issue. I think that's something that's easily feasible feasible. With regards to the housing tracks, I'll be talking to our planning manager. Maybe we'll do it under a study session because in addition to the housing tracks or proposed housing development within the core city of Shafter, we like to give an update on the customer growth and what that master plan looks like in terms of the number of homes, where they're at today, and then as well as arena numbers. Arena numbers, you know, is the regional housing needs allocation that comes from Kern Cog. Those are issued as consistent with our housing element. It's part of the general plan. To your point, Councilmember Givens, making sure that you have a housing inventory that's for all categories from above market, market, moderate, very low income, low income. And so that there's a housing inventory balance for all individuals in the city. So we'll provide that with you consist along with the Gossamer Grove and other housing tracks that we have in the queue. But I will propose because of the discussion, ideally, it might be better to do a study session. I'll get together with the mayor and Yasmina. We'll come up with a proposed date here in the in the coming weeks. And then lastly, is I want to propose before I start doing some work on this. My last city, we we had a downtown as well that consists of the city council was to revitalize the downtown. One of the challenges we we often hear from small business owners wanting to open a business downtown is the city fees. We charge for land zone, we charge for CUP, we charge, you know, for for just for planning alone, you can be looking between 5,000 to 10,000 before you even open your door. Then there's building plan check fees. That's another couple of thousand, and then you add it, you know. So before you can even open your business, you can be 5,000 to 10,000, 15,000 just upfront. One of the initiatives we deployed in my last city where the downtown was a pilot program that reduced the fees for only certain segments in the downtown area. Okay, so fees like for planning, engineering, building, we reduce those by approximately 75, not approximately, that were reduced by 75%. So let's say your total fees were 10,000. We think I reduced 75%. So now it was 2,500 in fees. The concept and the idea is that the business owner or the property owner can take that difference, the delta, and reinvest it into the business, right? The goal is that that they will invest more into the business. And that generates and stimulates and revitalizes that downtown. As you know, a lot of small business owners right now are struggling. I know I've heard from some of you of what can we do to help our small businesses to stay in business, to to expand? And I think even if I'll take Almichokan, for example, or Don Peppes, they might be able to use this program and build a more permanent outdoor patio structure, right? And and instead of having canopies downtown, now they have a permanent structure, right? That they can have seating, comply with social distance, winter's coming, put some outdoor heaters, whatever the case may be. And it helps, one, it's more presentable. Two, it allows them to invest downtown. And so what I'm proposing is, if this is a concept that you'd like to for me to do some more work to bring to you to further explore. I'm not asking for your approval right now. I already have the framework that we I did in my last city. So I just have to change from Gilroy to Shafter and a few other things. And I'll be able to present it to you for at least having a discussion, see if you're willing to entertain something like this. But I think this is consistent with your strategic goal to help our local businesses. It's consistent to revitalize our downtown. And I think it goes towards the expansion and hopefully new attraction of our of our downtown to bring more businesses because there might be people wanting to invest in starting a new business during this time. So councils, are there any interest from you? Just a thumbs up consensus that I can put something together and bring it to you?
Yes.
You don't think we should wait? Should we not wait until we can get out of this COVID deal and have a better climate out there?
I think it's better now because people are.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I can tell you that I had a, I had a, there's a couple of businesses that have approached us. One particular was really interested. But because of the fees associated, you know, they're small business, they didn't have a lot of capital. And they said, you know what, we're just going to wait. You know, it's the fees that we can't afford. So it's a pilot program, customer product council. We would do a 12-year, 12-month process with the put it together, deploy it, measure the performance of the program in those 12 months, report back to you. process with the, put it together, deploy it, measure the performance of the program in those twelve months, report back to you. And if it's, there was success with it, we can at that point decide whether we want to continue it or it wasn't successful, it was a good concept. So there's nothing really lost about it, but we might be able to promote and help stimulate our own economy rather than waiting for the economic state to get improved as we move forward. This COVID is going to be around for a while, and I think some businesses are really looking at how to be creative with staying in business. So again, it's a concept. I have a framework already that I can bring forward to you to have further discussion.
I think it's a good idea. Sorry, Caesar. Go ahead.
Hey Gabriel, anything that brings businesses to Shaftre, brings jobs and tax revenue or keeps businesses open that are struggling, I'm all for it, and I'm all for that plan.
Well, would it be, would it affect the ones that are already in or is it just for new ones?
No, it would, it would allow, say, an existing business that wanted to expand, like I gave the example of like I mean, they would qualify for it, or if it's a new business, you know, that wanted to come in, they would be able to qualify for it as well, you know. So it's, we would identify certain blocks of downtown. It might be from like forty-three down to the Laredo Highway, all along Sha- Central, might even include portions of Laredo. We have some of the small businesses. Give an example, La Taqueria, La Taqueria, that just relocated from behind City Hall over to on Laredo. They may have been, if that, we had designated that strip or certain portions of Laredo for this revital, pilot revitalization program, they may have qualified for that, for for that reduction, that fee reduction, and been able to put that money more into their business, right? It's a concept, so.
Okay, it might be good to know in advance, but when you bring a report to us, that we already have some information. Because I'm not familiar with any of them.
Yeah, I I I like the idea. You know, I agree with Caesar and, you know, Chad about, you know, anytime you can just bring this stuff up and and I think like, for example, I mean, a good example is 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 the COVID. And right now, a lot of the structures that the restaurants are using, I mean, thank God we don't have a a a windstorm coming up, but you know, it can be and and they're not really safe right now. But, you know, right now we're making it an exception for them. And it's really nice for them. It would be nice for them to have like a real, a permanent structure, like a patio setting. So I think that's a good idea. And then again, anytime you want to bring revenue to the city downtown Shaftre, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, it's all about business and it's all about money and what's best for the city financially. So I mean, those are, I mean, I'm just glad that you're thinking about that.
What was that?
I'm 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 agreeing and I'm agreeing that
Yeah, like I said, I I just wanted to get your 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 consensus. I'll I'll put a staff report together, framework, just like I did tonight on the library matter, it'll be a discussion, direction type of agenda item. So you're not committing to anything. It's just information at that point.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Thank you.
Okay, and Mayor, with that, that concludes my 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 report. I do have our Public Works Director, Mike James, who wants to give you an update on a few other projects. Mike?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor, members of the Shaftre City Council, I have some brief updates on public work projects and programs for the water system, specifically the topic of groundwater management and planning, which was previously mentioned by Councilmember Givens. The current groundwater authority, which Shaftre is a member of, is currently focused on developing a data management system, which basically means profiling groundwater wells and depths that will be used to assist with our sustainability planning. So we're, more work is really being done by technical, technical committees than the board of directors. And we have a staff member assigned to participate in these technical committees. For the past month of August, the city water system produced ten percent less water than the base comparison year of August in twenty thirteen. We've seen more conservation in the past, but we're still conserving. And just as a reminder, the fall-winter outdoor watering schedule starts next month. We'll have the same outdoor watering days, but with no time restrictions. And we hope to send out a postcard mailer and social media blitz, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. Finally, on street projects, we've wrapped up James Street. Essentially, I noticed this afternoon that they were wrapping up the roadway striping and the striping of the parking spaces. And we completed, we're wrapping up actually, the reconstruction and pavement ceiling work at Zirkar Road. But the road closure will be good, will be active through tomorrow. So hopefully by Thursday, we'll have the road open back up. And that concludes comments and reports by Public Works.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
No, no one further, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll go ahead and break for for recess, for a closed session. And there's three items on closed sessions. The number one is this conference with real, real property negotiation with the city manager, Gonzalez, and the party that's going to be negotiating is a country countryside car wash. And number two is conference with real estate property is city manager with Robert Height, and number three is the city manager and Rodney. So can I get a motion to go into recess?
Post it to adjourn the recess.
Well, motion by Councilmember Givens and second by Mayor Poe Camp Lopez on favor.
Please accept the room, breakout room.
The Azmene, I'm I'm done in the closed session, so I'm just going to leave the meeting.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
I think we are just waiting on Councilmember Prout and City Attorney Martinez.
I think everybody's on, Azmene.
Okay, thank you.
Very much, we're back from our closed session, and City Attorney Martinez, would you please report out, sir?
Sure thing, thank you, Mayor. Earlier tonight, the city council in the closed session, on the closed session items listed on the agenda on page three. There were three items on tonight's agenda, all of them related to real property negotiations concerning the properties listed on the agenda. All council members were present, they heard a presentation from its staff concerning updates on each of those negotiations, and there is no further reportable action.
Thank you very much for that, sir, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Well, a motion by Mayor Paul Temp Lopez, second by Councilmember Givens, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very much.
Good night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, good night.